I'm Susan Allen, Benefits Coordinator with the Green County Council on Aging.
I'm Dave Cusack of Cusack Law Office in Beaver Creek, Ohio.
We'd like to invite you to join us for our legal chat brought to you by the Green County Council on Aging. Hey, I just wanted to ask you some questions about advanced directives. We have a lot of people asking about that.
Yeah, they're important documents, and sometimes people don't really understand what they are, and they don't -- maybe they've heard of a healthcare power of attorney, or maybe they've heard of a living will, but sometimes the terminology is a little confusing. But they're Ohio Healthcare Advanced Directives, and they're just that. We make directions in advance for our treatment. We have to be competent in order to execute those, and then it's for the purpose of having people make decisions for us when we're not able to. So our major documents there are the Ohio Living Will and the Ohio Healthcare Power of Attorney. So the living will, and sometimes we have people think that that's a will, you know, it's confusing.
Yeah, or they're afraid of it.
Right, right. Yeah, we get all the time that people say, "Well, if I execute a living will, then a doctor decides whether, when I die."
Or my child, who I'm not liking right now.
Right, right. So, but the living will is a document that you execute that says, "If I'm in a permanently unconscious state or terminal condition, then here are my choices, how I would want my treatment handled." So oftentimes, we kind of think of it as an end-of-life treatment document. You have to be competent to execute it, and then when you do, it's available for that circumstance, which really is kind of end-of-life. Your doctor and another doctor have to have physically examined you and determined that you're in that state. So, and each document has the definitions of kind of these terms that we use in it, so if the person is a little confused, that can help explain it.
So if I've done a living will, which I have, by the way, I say I don't want, you know, tubes I don't want, but now my family is panicking, and can they override that?
No, it's a, yeah, so that's an interesting thing. So we'll talk about the healthcare power of attorney in a minute, but even if you had a healthcare power of attorney, that agent can't override the decisions you make in the living will. If you get to the point where you're in a permanently unconscious state or terminal condition, your wishes control in that document. It is your declaration. There are people listed on there, and sometimes they think they're decision-makers, but they're not. They are listed on there to be contacted by the healthcare professionals in the event those decisions are being made. So you're in a dire circumstance, and they contact your family, give them a chance to get there, and technically, they could pose an objection, but that would be a court thing.
Yeah, I've had a couple where people thought they could override it.
Right, and it's not the case. Yeah, so the living will, I used to think that the living will was a document that was a benefit if the person you name in your healthcare power of attorney changes philosophies on you. But really, most often, we see it as a benefit that people don't have to have folks second-guessing their decision, right? Everybody, if I don't have to sign the paperwork, I always have my opinion, right? And so we get that. And sometimes, family members, you would not want to leave a family member to be second-guessed or to struggle and stress over a decision to terminate treatment or something like that.
And can you change that? Let's say, you know, right now, I'm saying, "No, I don't want any extreme measures," but now I'm 80, and I'm thinking, "Ooh, maybe I do."
Absolutely, yeah. You can change it as often as you like. So, and when you execute a new document, you will revoke the previous one, and sure, that's totally up to you, as long as you're competent.
And do you have to go to an attorney to do these things?
No, that's a great question. You don't. You know, we remind people that they're important documents, so if you're going to execute it yourself, you want to feel awfully comfortable that you understand it. But I send people to a website called LeadingAgeOhio.org, and they have a great explanation under advanced directives. They have great questions. They have a publication that's in PDF form called Choices, and I think it's in its seventh edition now.
And I think we have that in our office.
Yeah, it's a great, great document. Very simple language, and then again, within it, it has full healthcare power of attorney, full living will. And let's talk about the healthcare power of attorney.
So when is the healthcare power of attorney effective?
Yeah, so that's a confusing issue for some people, but a healthcare power of attorney is, by law, a springing power of attorney. It only becomes effective and grants an agent authority to act for you when you are no longer able to make your own informed healthcare decisions. The healthcare power of attorney is different. The living will is your statement about the way you want treatment in this specific set of circumstances. A healthcare power of attorney is much broader. It gives you the authority to name someone who would make your decisions in the event you can't. So let's say you're recovering from a stroke, and you have not regained the capacity to make informed healthcare decisions. In that situation, your healthcare power of attorney would spring into effect and grant that agent the ability to make choices on your behalf.
Well, and that's a good question. So first of all, I'd imagine you want to be careful who you're naming as an agent.
You do, that's right.
But we do have folks who have no family at all. Who else would they name as an agent?
Yeah, so it doesn't have to be family. You can name a friend, or, you know, somebody that you go to church with, or you could, but, and then it doesn't necessarily have to be age. Sometimes we have people concerned, "I don't want to name my youngest child, who's RN, because I don't want to offend my oldest child." We tell people, "These aren't honorary positions. You're making important decisions, so we want somebody that should feel comfortable in that circumstance." But it doesn't necessarily have to be a relative. If you don't have anybody, then that's not really a time to just guess or choose someone. So that's a tough.
And can you do more than one person?
So you can. We generally advise against having co-agents. You want to have agents in the alternative, so if you name a child, and they're not available, right, a successor, so that next person would be available. And sometimes, we have a situation where somebody's called upon to make decisions, but they're not available. They may be in a plane. In that case, they immediately go to the next person in line. When the primary person becomes available, they regain their primary position, so.
Well, that's a good idea, yeah.
It is, yeah. So it's always good to have the alternates.
And this is, healthcare power of attorney is not the same as a, like, financial power of attorney?
That's correct. It's limited to healthcare, so, and most of the time, when we execute a financial or a general power of attorney, we typically would make that effective immediately. By law, a healthcare power of attorney is not effective until you become unable to make your own informed decisions. We call that a springing power of attorney. So I can't tell you the number of times I had somebody in the office who said, "You know, I told the doctors I wanted Mom to get this treatment, and they wouldn't do it." I said, "Was your mom competent?" "Yes." "Well, then she's making the choices," right? Yeah, so it doesn't allow you to override the will of the person who's made that, you know, made that choice. It's just when they're not able to make informed decisions, then the agent takes it.
Because I do see a lot of people who are very nervous about the living will and the healthcare power of attorney, because they're afraid someone's going to make a decision they don't want.
Yeah, so we deal sometimes with the populations that's concerned about losing independence, and we want to express, this is, this is an ability to have independence, to make choices that are your choices, rather than have them made for you if you're not capable of making them, right? So, and I tell people, the alternative is, if you can't, if you don't have these documents in place, and you're not able to make your own decisions, then the only alternative is probate court and a guardianship.
Yeah, and that's a good question. That's why we really try to push people to do this, but you know how we all are. "I'll do that later."
That's right.
Absolutely.
That's right, yeah. I tell people, you know, "We want, we want you to make decisions that give you the authority." And so when we have an advanced directive, we might be afraid, because we're thinking of somebody making decisions for us, but that's not the way I think about it. I think about it as your choosing who will help you in that circumstance, so exercising your own power.
And you said we can update this, and do you recommend that we update every so often?
Yes, so as far as I'm concerned, there's not a magic number, but we suggest people look at all of their estate planning documents, at least annually, just to go over them, make sure they understand what's going on, and that their choices remain the same. So if you have, if you're somebody who has a shoebox with tax documents in it or receipts, then put a note in there that tells you to look at it. Or if it's, you know, you decorate for the holidays, and you have some, you have that Rubbermaid container with the ornaments, put that note in there, and you'll remember.
Absolutely. Well, thanks. I just think this is great information. And can, that website you were telling us about, can we put that on this video somehow?
Absolutely. LeadingAgeOhio.org.
Excellent. So Dave, can you tell me a little bit about guardianship? I know I have people who did not do planning ahead, and now Mom or Dad is totally incompetent. What did they do?
Yeah, so when someone, when we think about a guardianship, guardianship is a probate court process by which a person, or it could technically be an entity, so sometimes we have a social services kind of organization that does that. But they are named to make the decisions for the healthcare, or the finances, or both, of a person who's no longer competent.
So what does it mean to be incompetent?
Well, in the context of a guardianship application, a person is incompetent when, by virtue of some mental health or physical health circumstance, they're no longer able to make their own decisions or protect themselves, and therefore, the court requires intervention to protect them on their own behalf. The process involves determining if the person is incompetent. It usually requires a, an expert statement from a medical professional. There's a hearing. The person is provided notice, the person who would be the ward that's alleged to be incompetent.
Wow, so you have to sit there and listen to them say you're incompetent?
Yeah, technically, but to be honest with you, in the practical world, that doesn't happen that often. The person doesn't often choose to attend, either because they don't remember, or they just are not capable, or they're not interested. But, so the process involves asking the court to find that the person is not competent, and then that there's a finding that there is no less restrictive means to care for this person. So if I have a healthcare power of attorney, but you don't know about it, you file for a guardianship, so you can make healthcare decisions for me, and then ultimately, if you find this healthcare power of attorney, unless there's something that, about that, the person I've named, or the circumstances that would make that unsafe for me, that would be a less restrictive means than the court supervising my healthcare decisions. So in that case, the court would not grant a guardianship. They would say that document satisfies.
So it is really then up to the court?
Correct. So if you're going to apply to be guardian for someone, you have to, typically, you have to be a resident of the state of Ohio, since we're talking about Ohio law here. There are occasions where a relative could potentially file for guardian of the person and not be an Ohio resident, but for finances, always has to be a resident of the state of Ohio. And most often, the court's going to want that person to be, even for the guardianship of the person, to be a resident of the state of Ohio.
And is that person, in your, you know, experience, typically in a nursing home? Or are they at home sometimes, or?
Yeah, they're at home sometimes. It depends. So sometimes, we have someone who is healthy enough to be at home, and with certain protections in place, cannot be a danger to themselves, but when they go to the doctor, they can't direct their own healthcare. Or when it comes to finances, they can't make their own decisions. They can't pay bills, and nobody can access their funds. So in that case, the person could be home, but a lot of times, it is somebody who's in a nursing home, yeah.
So what kinds of things, let's say, I can't get a guardianship, and now this person is making their own decisions, and really, they shouldn't be, what happens?
Yeah, so, yeah, so sometimes, we have people who are in that gray area, right? They're not necessarily incompetent, but we see a, kind of a little decline in their ability to make healthy decisions for themselves. That's tough for the courts and everybody, because we don't want to take away someone's free will, because they're not making the decisions we would want to make for them, but we want to.
And that's a tough one, we see all the time.
It is.
You know, the family's like, "Why can't you do something?" Well, they're, they're competent.
Right. Yeah, I had a case that, the family came to me, and they, they had called Adult Protective Services, and they say, you know, "Mom won't communicate with us." The Adult Protective Case Worker, Adult Protective Services Case Worker went out to the home, and they could see that she hadn't cut her lawn all year, that all these things happened. But she expressed an understanding of what's going on. She said, "I don't want to cut my lawn, and I don't want to talk to those people," and, you know, she was in a situation where she was making choices nobody in the family would want her to make, but she was still capable of making her own choices, so.
Again, the guardianship process is not an easy thing, from what I understand.
That's true, and it's changed over the last several years, because there were some situations in which guardians had many, many wards, and they weren't providing what we would want in the best interest of those people. So the guardianship process involves getting a background check as a part of your application to become guardian, getting, if possible, an expert opinion that the person is not competent, applying to the court, asking to be named as guardian of that person. The next of kin of that person need to be notified. Sometimes, we have people who worry that somebody's just going to sweep in and get a guardianship, but that's not the way it works. Guardians, guardianship applications involve notifying next of kin, and then the court has to notify the person who we would call the ward, who would be subject to the guardianship, that that application has been filed, that they have a right to counsel, they have a right to an independent evaluation, and so forth. In the event, all those things come together, and the person is not capable of making their own decisions, they have a, no documents that are less restrictive means, like a healthcare power of attorney, or a general power of attorney, and the court finds that the person who's applied is the appropriate person, then they will give them authority to make decisions on behalf of that person.
And how long typically does that whole process take?
Weeks to months, depending on circumstances.
So getting a healthcare power of attorney would be a way easier thing to do.
It can be, yeah, that's, that's true. And then you're the one choosing, right? So if you haven't executed those documents, you're not choosing who applies to be your guardian. There can be some benefits of the guardianship, though. So when you're, so if you apply to be guardian of a person, and you're named guardian, you're given that authority, you're actually an agent for the court. The court is the superior guardian. So sometimes, what we think of as the hassle of having to report to the court, having to give a guardianship plan, and all of those things, are protections for you as well, because maybe the family says, "What happened to Dad's money?" If you're the guardian, you're reporting the expenditure of every penny. And so in that situation, I was, sometimes, people will tell me, "The guardian's stealing Mom's money," and I'd say, "Having a guardianship is the worst way to be a thief, because the court is making sure you account for every penny."
Okay, well, that's good to know, though, because, yeah, you would think, you know, I would be afraid that someone would get a guardianship just so they could spend all the person's money.
Yeah, in fact, most of the time, a guardian's going to be bonded. They'll have an insurance policy for the case where they would misuse the money, and that would protect the interests of the ward. So that's a good thing, yeah. Yeah, sometimes, we don't want the court supervision, but if we don't have a person that we feel comfortable will protect our interests, guardianship can, can do that.
So Dave, why would you want to avoid a guardianship?
Well, a lot of people want to avoid a guardianship, because the court involvement is an open process, involves a finding publicly that the person is incompetent, requires a bunch of other processes in terms of accounting for assets, being bonded. If I know that I want my spouse, or my oldest child, to be guardian and make my choices if I can't, I should do that planning ahead of time, in the event that I don't have someone. Maybe it is a good thing that the court's overlooking whoever that decision-maker becomes.
Absolutely. Now, I know it, I, there was a person in our office that, at one time, that actually was guardian for someone, and I know, spent a lot of time reporting and checking in and all that kind of stuff.
Right, yeah, it's an interesting mix. Because some people abused a status as guardian as a money-making thing, and it happened in a couple of the larger municipal areas, the laws have changed, and then the way that we employ a guardianship requires that you show that you're looking to essentially try and give that ward the best life that ward can, based on their limitations. So it's, it was a problem that wasn't wide, as widespread as you'd think, but the solution to that was pretty good, because you're required to have a plan for that person, not just pay their bills and make sure they're not a danger to themselves.
Well, and I know that this person had to go see them, you know, a certain number of times, make sure, checking in, and I thought that was great.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, instead of just, "I bet," and I don't even talk to the person, you know?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, and that can happen, so, in the case that, you know, we have situations, though, where, where people don't apply for guardianship, and somebody may have, may be abusing a senior with healthcare power of attorney and a general power of attorney. So in those cases, we just hope that they get picked up by somebody, so that may be Adult Protective Services, that may be, you know, those type of circumstances. But sometimes, it's a little late.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's a few bad people, lots of good people, but, but trying to put in guardians.
Yeah, so the guardianship process, it's much more difficult as guardian to act in a way that is exploitive of the ward. If you have a power of attorney, a healthcare power of attorney, that's, if that person that you've chosen is not the right person, then that's a lot easier situation in which to exploit them for money, or, you know. We had a case recently where the granddaughter of the person who had become incompetent had power of attorney, and essentially, kept Grandma in the house when she shouldn't have been, because they were living there rent-free, they were using Grandma's money to pay all the bills, and, and they kind of used it as a free ride. In that case, that wouldn't happen with a guardianship. So we think, if we have a classic situation where we have the best people to choose, and obviously, it makes sense to make those decisions ahead of time, in the absence of that, don't just choose anyone, because I'd rather have the court overlooking that type of circumstance.
Okay. I have a lot of people who just freak out about probate. What is that?
Yeah, so we do, we hear that a lot. People have a fear of the legend of the evils of probate. But probate's just a process. It's a process, it's court-supervised for administering assets of someone who, those assets don't manage to avoid probate, and account for appropriate debts, account for appropriate debts, take care of taxes, and so forth. But it's a probate-supervised process, a probate-court-supervised process.
So if I have a will, though, then I don't have to do probate, is that right?
That is not correct.
Uh-oh.
So, so the issue about, we hear that all the time, that I don't, I avoid probate because my will says this goes to my son. But the will applies only to probate assets. So let's just kind of think of it as an example. Well, let's talk about what a probate asset is. A probate asset is an asset that doesn't automatically transfer to someone else by the manner in which it's owned. So let's say you have a 401K, and you name a beneficiary. That beneficiary survives you, we don't have to ask probate court to help, we don't have to look at a will, you fill out a claims process as the surviving beneficiary, and that asset goes to you. If you own a house jointly with a spouse, and it's a survivorship deed, we don't need to ask the probate court to assist in that process. We fill an affidavit out after the first spouse has died, we file that with the death certificate in the recorder's office. Those are examples of non-probate assets. Let's say that you own your house just in your name, you pass away, not married, where does that go? Now, we need the probate court to help us out. That's a probate asset.
So if I, if, if I just own my house, and I don't have a joint survivor, is there a way I can pass it on without probate?
There is, and actually, real estate's a really good thing to talk about in that context, because when people, with their inherent fear of probate, they hear there are ways to avoid probate, they kind of jump on that. So let's say that house, you want it to avoid probate and go directly to one person. You can do what's called a transfer-on-death designation affidavit, and that asset would then transfer, just like any other beneficiary designation, to the, as long as that person survived you. Now, if we have multiple beneficiaries, that becomes more cloudy. You have three or four beneficiaries of a bank account or an investment account, that's not a big deal. It's going to divide evenly, right? And it's going to just go directly to them. If you name three people as beneficiary of your house, that doesn't divide, they don't cut the house in thirds, so now we have things to consider after you're gone. How is that going to divide in the way that I would want it to? Further, at least now, there are proposals in the Ohio Legislature to change this. We have this thing called a dower interest. So if you're married, and you own real estate, your spouse automatically has an interest in that real estate. So let's go back to naming three beneficiaries to your house. If all three of those people are married, and those three beneficiaries want to sell the property and divide the proceeds, they need their spouses to sign off, too. So that's part of the estate planning process. We want to ask those things to make sure that it's not just, "How do I avoid probate?" Because we get that a lot. "How can I avoid probate with my house?" The worst-case example I've seen of that is a man came in, had nine children, eight of them married, and his house was basically his main asset, and he wanted to avoid probate and have a transfer-on-death designation for that house.
To all of them?
Yeah, equally to his children. So if that, if he ended up following through on that, he would have had to have 17 signatures among those people to sell the house.
Oh.
I don't know how often you see 17 people agree easily.
And what happens if, yeah, I was going to say, so, yeah, what happens if two of them don't agree?
Yeah, you got a problem. So that's why, you know, part of that planning is not just, "How do I avoid probate?", but "Does it make sense?" So.
So, and let me go back to the will. You said that really is only good if it's in probate.
Correct.
So what property does a will control?
With very few exceptions, a will controls only probate assets. So the asset has to be something that doesn't automatically transfer on its own, and we need the assistance of the probate court, and then the will controls it. So sometimes, I have, there's a colleague of mine who says, "I draft wills for people in hopes that they never need them, so they may have a trust, or they may avoid probate by beneficiary designations," or so forth. But to give it a practical example, let's say that you have a will that says, "Everything to this friend of mine," right? The assets you have, you rent a home, you lease a car, so those things aren't going to pass. You have a financial account, a checking and a investment account, and both of those lists, somebody else has the beneficiary. The fact that that will names this friend doesn't apply to anything, because there's no probate assets for it to control. We most often see that as a problem for people with, where they say, "I'm going to send everything to my oldest child, they'll know what I want, and they'll, and they'll follow the will," right? So I name that oldest child as a beneficiary, thinking they're going to divide this. That may work out, but it's really creating a bunch of problems.
So again, if the will, if, if I don't have a beneficiary on the house, or a TOD, and it goes to probate, and my will says, "These three people get it,"
Correct.
"Then you're back to that same situation, but it's through the court now."
Right, so the, so in that situation, frequently, the executor of the estate will be able to sell the property, so we need one signature, and then divide the net proceeds among the beneficiaries. So it doesn't always have to be that way. The three may want to own it jointly and rent it out, or whatever, but we don't need those people and their spouses necessarily to, to come to an agreement.
Dave, I've heard TOD, POD, what types of things can you transfer that way?
Well, most things. So, so for people to understand, any transfer-on-death, that's the OD part, right? A transfer on. A transfer on death is TOD. And a POD is payable on death. They really mean the same thing. It's just what property is being, it's being applied to. So payable on death is a cash account, checking, or savings, because we can pay that money to the beneficiary. A transfer on death is essentially everything else. So a car can be transferred on death. A house can be transferred on death. Securities accounts can be transferred on death. So most of the things you own can have a transfer-on-death beneficiary.
And where do you go to get those executed?
Yeah, so it depends on the property itself. So for example, if you were looking to make your car TOD to someone, you would go to, in Ohio, we go to the title agency, and we ask them to change the title to be my name, transfer-on-death to this person. You don't, that person doesn't have any rights now. They just are my named beneficiary. If I die, and I haven't, I still own that property, and I haven't changed the beneficiary, then it goes directly to them without probate. For bank accounts, obviously, you go to the financial institution. If you have investment accounts, you would do that through the financial institution that controls those. So if you have a fidelity account, you can work with them to have a named beneficiary.
Okay, so on a will, can I do that myself? I know we talked about, like, healthcare power attorneys a while back. Can I do that myself and get it notarized?
So the notary is like the bells and whistles ring. So we have people who are so accustomed to having their signature notarized as this official act. And it is. But as it relates to wills in Ohio, a notary is irrelevant. A will needs two witnesses. So occasionally, we'll see somebody who has a witness and a separate person notarize it. That's okay. The notary means nothing, but we have a second witness, that person that notarized it. But if, when we see a will come in, and it's just notarized, we cringe, because that doesn't meet Ohio law. We don't have a second witness.
So then, it's not legitimate.
It's not valid. Yeah, so there are some circumstances under which we might be able to have that found if there were actually other witnesses. They just didn't sign. There are, but we don't want to have all of that at risk. We want to execute it properly. So like other documents, we don't, at least in my office, we don't oppose people being do-it-yourselfers. We just want to make sure, we want them to know and feel comfortable that they're doing it correctly. Because we hate to see somebody, in order to save some fees, do something on their own, and it not work.
Absolutely. And some of these things are pretty complicated, in my mind, anyway.
Well, I think that one of the benefits of going to get help is that you'll be asked questions you hadn't thought about. So if you go to an attorney that you trust, and you ask, you know, that you say, this is what I want to accomplish, they may ask you things that you say, wow, I hadn't thought about that. So for example, in my will, I may say, I have, I may say, this is going to go to my two kids, right? One of my kids passes before me. If I haven't accounted for that in the will, Ohio law is probably going to pass that, one of those children's share, if they've predeceased me, to their children, if they have any. But what if they're really young? If we discuss that in the office, we're probably going to say, just in case, let's put some protections that kids can't get it till they're 25, or whatever. Now, the child you're thinking about may already be 35. That's fine. We just put a provision in there that says, any beneficiary, if they're under a certain age, their share gets held in trust for them, and only to be used for needs until they reach a certain age.
And I know we offer a class at the Council on Aging about all of these issues. I've probably been through it 15 times, and I still get confused.
Right. It can be confusing, yeah. But it's like anything else. You know, people like me, it's just because we deal with it all the time. So if I had a Medicare question, then I would be lost. But if I asked you, it's like a second language, right? So we know that.
And so another question, if I have a trust, does that avoid probate?
So it does. Assets owned in trust will avoid probate. Correct. So we do see an error, is that where people sometimes create a trust, they don't move assets into the trust. And then they, their main purpose of having the trust was to avoid probate, and they don't do it.
So everything has to be in the name of the trust in order for that to function?
Correct. Most often, it's your trust, it's in your name as trustee. So if somebody were looking, a lot of times, we have people who look on the county property records, and you may see that your neighbor, it's, on his property record, it says Bill Jones, TR, or trustee. You say, what's that all about? But it's probably that he has a trust as his estate-planning vehicle, and by owning it as trustee, it falls into that trust.
Okay.
Yeah.
So really, the, it sounds like probate is not necessarily a bad thing, but there are some bad things about it, right?
Yeah, so there can be. So most often, people, if they're, if they're not going on the urban legends of probate, that it's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's going to take years, the legitimate complaints we hear are, it's open. So I don't have privacy. Somebody could look up on the Green County public, or Green County Probate Court website, if my estate is in Green County, and see what I put on my inventory. That's true. So some, and then there's sometimes little delays because of procedures that have to happen that may not happen in a trust, or may not happen if you have named beneficiaries and that whole process. So for example, if you named me as your transfer-on-death beneficiary of your house, once I have a death certificate, I can transfer that to me. It's likely going to be more process involved in the probate before that transfer can occur. There's also distinctions between who has claims as to probate and non-probate assets. So the two largest categories we would be talking about would be creditors, so people who claim that you owe them money at the time of your death, and spouse. So sometimes, we have people who, maybe they marry late in life, they have a general agreement that my estate's going to be mine, your estate's going to be yours, but they don't have a prenuptial agreement or trusts. It's just a kind of a verbal thing. One of them passes first. The surviving spouse has certain rights in that probate estate of the deceased spouse. So that can be a challenge. Those rights are not present in non-probate assets. So if we avoid probate, we avoid those marital claims. And then creditors, by and large, there are some rules and exceptions, but by and large, the creditor is going to be restricted to the probate assets of the deceased. So if I pass away as unmarried, and I have $20,000 worth of credit card debt, but all of my assets passed to somebody by beneficiary designation, those creditors don't have a claim against those assets, generally speaking. There are, like I said, there can be some exceptions and arguments,